Real-time access to the zoning board of appeals meeting is available utilizing the Zoom link or telephone number in meeting ID provided below. The public comment can be addressed to the zoning board of appeals by utilizing the Zoom link or telephone number and meeting ID provided below. The ID for the joining the Zoom meeting, it's HTTPS colon backslash backslash town of Barnstable dash US dot zoom dot US backslash I backslash eight nine six two oh two six three five four eight. Telephone number option is eight 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 four seven five four four nine nine. The meeting ID is eight nine six two oh two six three five four eight. The meeting ID is eight nine six two oh six three five four eight. Uh applicants, their representatives and individuals required are entitled to appear before the zoning board of appeals, may appear remotely and may participate through accessing the link or telephone number that I just provided. Documentary exhibits and our visual presentations are have been submitted in advance so that they may be displayed for remote access viewing. Copings of the applications are available for review by calling five oh eight eight six two four six eight two or emailing Anna dot Brigham at town dot Barnstable dot MA dot US. So I call a meeting to order and I would ask the board members to introduce themselves, please.
Mark Hanson, present.
Aaron Webb, present.
And Denise Johnson, present. And Paul Pennard, I'm present. So we have more than three, so we have a quorum. We have four people on the board. Please note that this meeting is recorded and broadcast on channel eighteen in accordance and in accordance with MGL chapter thirty A paragraph twenty. I must inquire whether anyone is taping this meeting and to please make their presence known. Okay, seeing none. We'll go to the next uh item, which is minutes. And so this will be September twenty eighth, two oh two two. I need a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
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 This is second from Denise and all in favor?
Aye.
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 That's unanimous of all four, me too. Now I moved to the minutes for October twelfth, two thousand twenty-two. I need a motion.
To approve.
It's Mark, second.
Second. Aaron Webb.
Aaron, all in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous and those are accepted. Let's go to uh now, we were uh supposed to have an executive session for GB Bovel et al versus town of Barnstable zoning board of appeals, five seventy-one Old Post Road Cootouit, Marsens Mills, docket number one eight seven two CV zero zero four three one. Since the chairman and the vice chairman of the zoning board of appeals are not here, nor do we have five members, uh we're going to delay that until the next meeting. Um well, discussion, obviously, in public session would be detrimental to the board's position and um and so we're going to postpone that. So I move that the zoning board of appeals convene an executive session. No, I don't. I move that we don't. Okay, let's move on to old business. Uh this is appeal number twenty twenty-two dash oh oh three, Kutos Realty Investment slash Dunkin' Donuts. All the board members present on this will be part of this. Uh Cootos, Kutos Realty Investment Company two LLC has petition for a variance for from two forty dash twenty-five D bulk regulations in the HB district. The petitioner is seeking a variance from the side yard setback for the proposed drive-through canopy. The proposed setback is seven point two feet where ten feet is required. The subject property is located in seven five one West Main Street, Hyannis, Mass. It's shown on the assessor's map, two forty-nine as parcel one sixty-three, is located in the highway HB zoning district. The um applicant has requested to withdraw this position twenty petition twenty twenty-two oh three three. So I need a motion to um accept the withdrawal.
Motion to withdraw.
Okay, uh that would be Denise and I need a second.
Second.
Mark, okay.
Second, yep.
We'll take a roll call vote. Uh Mark?
In favor.
Uh Denise?
Favor.
Aaron?
In favor.
And I'm in favors, therefore that is withdrawn. The next one is appeal number twenty twenty-two dash oh three four, which was readvertised, Kutos Realty Trust Investment slash Dunkin' Donuts. Kutos Realty Investment Company one one LLC has applied for a special permit pursuant to section two forty dash twenty-five C conditional uses in the HB district and section two forty dash ninety-three B alterations and expansions of a non-conforming structure not used as a single or two-family residences by special permit. The applicant is seeking to add a drive-through to the existing Dunkin' Donuts. The subject property is located at seven fifty-one West Main Street, Hyannis, Mass. It's shown on a assessor's map, two forty-nine as parcel one six three, is located in the highway business HB zoning district. A motion has been offered to withdraw this appeal. I need a motion to accept that withdrawal.
Motion to withdraw appeal number twenty twenty-two's uh dash zero three four.
Mark, second, please.
Second, Denise Johnson.
Denise is the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous, I'm aye too. That's withdrawn. The next item is appeal number twenty twenty-two zero three nine, readvertised one fifty-seventh Thornton Drive LLC. Uh one fifty-seventh Thornton Drive LLC has applied for a special permit pursuant to section two forty dash ninety-three B expansion of an pre-existing non-conforming structure and to section two forty dash fifty-seven reduction in parking. The applicant seeks to construct an approximately two thousand two square foot storage addition to the southern end of the existing building. The existing structure is non-conforming to numerous dimensional parking and screening requirements and the proposed expansion will also be non-conforming to dimensional parking and screening requirements. The subject property is located at one fifty-seventh Thornton Drive, Hyannis, Mass. As shown on the assessor's map, two ninety-six as parcel zero one nine, is located in the industrial IND zoning district. This has been continued from September fourteenth and October twelfth, two thousand and two twenty-two. And I have to ask uh whoever's here to represent.
Tony Cox.
Oh, hi, Eliza. Uh do you want to proceed with just four of us or do you want to uh to continue?
I I think we would like to proceed, thank you for asking. Um I would suggest Mr. Chairman, though, maybe we could read both matters and open them together rather than dealing with them separately.
Yeah, let me read uh let me read the other one in, please.
Sure.
Um also quoted in this will be appeal number twenty twenty-two dash oh four oh, readvertised one fifty-seventh Thornton Drive LLC. One fifty-seventh Thornton Drive LLC has petition for a variance from section two forty dash thirty through three E rear yard setback, lot coverage and section two forty dash thirty-three F special screening, section two forty dash fifty-six parking schedule and section two forty dash fifty-seven reduction of parking. The applicant seeks to construction approximately two thousand two square foot storage addition to the southern end of the existing build-in building, which will intensify existing something here. Non-conforming setback, lot coverage, screening and parking demand. The subject property is located at one fifty-seventh Thornton Drive, Hyannis, Mass. As shown on the assessor's map, two ninety-six as partial zero one nine, is located in the industrial IND zoning district. This has been continued from September fourteenth and October twelfth, two thousand and two. Um I have one question before you start, Eliza. Are we doing the two thousand and two square foot or are we doing the planning board, what the other one, you know, which is?
Yeah, um yes, it we we have submitted a revised plan that reduce and I'll pull, I actually have some slides that I'd like to show the board as part of the presentation, but it reduces the size of the proposed addition to just seven hundred and twenty-five square feet. So it is a smaller addition. We had originally submitted the first plans, which had the larger addition, and then in working um with the fire department have decided to reduce the size of the addition, hence the revised plans.
So, Eliza, the site plan we're looking at is dated four fifteen, two thousand twenty-two?
Um that is the date, but then the last revision date is um October twentieth, two thousand and two.
Gotcha.
Has the revision box just above is prepared for and you should be looking at the one that says um ten twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, that's right. All right, go ahead, Eliza, the court is here.
I'm gonna try and. Anna, do you think I could get permission to share my screen?
Let me ask David.
Uh yeah, I can, yeah, one second.
Could you switch it? Thank you.
Yep.
And I recognize Chris there, whom I met when I was there. Hello, Chris.
Also.
Yeah. Thank you. There we go. Okay, great. So, yes, um thank you. Joining me uh this this evening is that Harry and Chris Sossier, who are the property owners and the principals of Northeast Tool Supply, which is the business that operates on the property. And then also joining me this evening is Mark Dibb, who is the project engineer from Cape and Islands Engineering, who did the site plan that I was just referring to. So um just to orient the board, um this is a Google Earth image uh showing Thornton Drive. Here's the Shepley uh of buildings up at the top. Um and this is the subject property, one fifty-seven Thornton Drive in in Barnstable. Um here's a blow up another Google Earth image, again, showing uh the proposed location and existing conditions. Um so the site is uh about point four four acres. It is developed with an approximately seven thousand square foot structure that's shown on this uh Google Streets image. Uh this building was constructed in the nineteen nineties and is um the home of Northeast Tool Supply, which is a retail tools uh seller. Um the retail area of this building is about one thousand two hundred and ninety-two square feet. In addition, the building also houses uh office space of about six hundred and ninety-five square feet and storage areas of about four thousand seven hundred and sixty-three square feet. As you can see from uh the image and the aerial photograph, it is um a pretty much entirely disturbed site. Um in addition, the property, for those of you who are familiar with Thornton Drive, um as you probably know, that's a pretty steep road as you head to the north. And so across this site, there is a change in elevation of about twenty feet from about a hundred and six feet at the highest point down to about eighty-six feet in the southeast corner. And you can see how as the building was constructed to account for the elevation, it sort of steps down um in the roof line. In terms of the applicable zoning, uh the property is in the industrial zoning district. It is um in the AP overlay district and a small portion, it doesn't show well on the assessor's map, which sometimes aren't quite accurate, but only a small portion of the property is in the WP district. It's about this corner here, um that's in the WP district. Uh no portion of the building is in the WP district.
Anna, I'm gonna I'm gonna halt you right there, pause, remain. Aaron, are you on board here?
I am.
Okay, thank you. All right, I just wanted to air to Eliza, make sure we had four on here, please.
Yeah, I appreciate that, thank you. Um the property that um is before you has the benefit of an older variance decision that was granted by this board. It's decision number nineteen seventy-seven dash sixty-seven. Um at the time, this lot and six others were owned by uh Cape Cod Bank and Trust Company. And the company uh requested uh variance relief for seven lots that it owned on Thornton Drive, including the Locust. Um the lots, these seven lots were originally in the business zoning district and they conformed to all of the zoning requirements when um the subdivision plan that laid out these lots was approved in nineteen seventy. Subsequent to being laid out uh by the subdivision plan, the zoning here changed from a business to industrial and all of the lots um uh had trouble meeting the setbacks, the front side and rear, the lot areas and the lot widths. And so Cape Cod Bank and Trust Company applied to the board and the board found that the property in question, this is the seven lot, is unique to the zoning district due to the existence of Thornton Drive, which effectively divides these lots so that they cannot be combined. The decision also quotes the board as finding that the zoning change from business to industrial on the Locust rendered this land impossible to build upon because of their size and shape. And so the board granted variance relief for these seven lots from the lot area requirements, the front side and rear yard setbacks and the lot width. This decision, which is again number nineteen seventy-seven dash sixty-seven, which was actually approved in nineteen seventy-eight, contains no limit on the extent of the relief granted. In other words, there's nothing in the decision um in granting, for example, the setback requirements that set a minimum setback requirement. It just granted relief from lot area setbacks and width. So moving to the proposed site plan, and this is um a sort of a blow up image of the currently proposed site plan. As you can see, the plan proposes an addition of about seven hundred and twenty-five square feet to the south portion of the building, and that's highlighted in this different color here. Um in addition, the site plan proposes the formal uh striping of fourteen parking spaces and uh some new stormwater management system to uh treat and capture stormwater. This doesn't exist right now, so that's a big improvement compared to what is existing on the site. So with respect to zoning compliance, um the lot area of the site is about nineteen thousand two hundred and fifty-four square feet. Uh that does not meet the requirements of the industrial zoning district, but again, as I mentioned, variance relief was granted with the nineteen seventy-seven variant. The lot frontage complies with the IND requirement. The lot width, again, this was granted relief from the nineteen seventy-seven uh variant. With respect to front yard setback, the existing uh building is located forty-one point seven feet from uh Thornton Drive. Um the proposed addition is located, proposed to be located forty-four point eight feet from Thornton Drive, so it's further back from the setback. But again, this was something that was granted relief uh in the nineteen seventy-seven variant. With respect to uh the side yard setback where the addition is proposed, that setback is proposed at fifty-five point four feet and complies with the requirements of the IND district. The rear yard setback is um right now, one point six feet from the rear property line at its closest point, and the addition is proposed at one point six feet from the rear yard setback. So in other words, the existing rear yard setback is being maintained with the addition. And again, this was something that was granted relief via the nineteen seventy-seven variant. Now, moving on to um areas, dimensional areas that weren't covered by the nineteen seventy-seven variants, the first is lot coverage. So right now, the existing lot coverage is thirty-one point three percent and the proposed lot coverage is thirty-five point four percent. So it is a slight intensification in terms of lot coverage. And this is something that we have asked for special permit relief from or in the alternative uh a variant. Same thing with parking. So um right right now, uh with the proposed uh site plan, twenty-one parking spaces are required and fourteen parking spaces are proposed. I do have another slide in a moment, which will show you that actually, although it will remain non-conforming, it becomes more conforming in terms of the percentage than what exists right now with the fourteen parking spaces that are proposed. So this is also an area where we've asked for a special permit relief or in the alternative a variant. And then finally, um the special screening requirements that exist in the industrial district. Uh again, these, the site is non-conforming to these requirements um and will remain non-conforming to these requirements. And so we've again asked for a special permit or in the alternative a variance, and I'll go through these in a little more detail. So first, with respect to the standard, um and I think it's important in looking at two forty ninety-three to read A and B together. So two forty ninety-three is the non-conforming uh building section for non-residential buildings. There's a separate section in the zoning ordinance that deals with residential buildings. And essentially, the first paragraph of two forty ninety-three is the as-of-right section, and that provides that one can alter and expand a pre-existing non-conforming building or structure um as-of-right, provided that the alteration or expansion does not increase or intensify the degree of the pre-existing non-conforming conformity of the building or structure. So that's applicable here because, as I've described in a minute, and I'll go through it again in more detail shortly, um there are existing non-conformities that will be intensified. So the next uh paragraph under that section is uh sub-paragraph B, and that provides that alterations or expansions in pre-existing non-conforming buildings or structures that do not meet the provisions of subsection A shall be permitted only by special permit and that the standard is in granting such a special permit, the board must find that the proposed repairs, alterations or expansions are not substantially more detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood. So there's your the your standard for the special permit. In addition, or in the alternative, we've also applied for a special permit under section two forty fifty-seven, which allows the zoning board to reduce the amount of required parking when it finds that there are unique characteristics on the site. And the section of the bylaw gives some examples, but one is um characteristics of a use that invalidate normal methods of parking demand calculation. And we would suggest um that the board could either grant the parking release under the non-conformity section I just mentioned or um under this section uh for based on the characteristics of this use, and I'll discuss that in just a moment. So now, turning to compliance with the criteria. Uh again, the nineteen seventy-seven variant has already granted relief from lot area, lot width and setbacks. And under the special permit, we're requesting to intensify existing non-conforming conditions on the site. Um no new non-conformities are being created, and that's important because that would automatically require a variance. But under section two forty-three ninety-three B, one can intensify an existing non-conformity by special permit. And so here are those non-conformities. First, with respect to lot coverage, um again, the zoning maximum in the industrial district is twenty-five percent. The existing lot coverage is thirty-one point three percent and the proposed is thirty-five point four percent. With respect to parking, um presently, there are seven striped parking spaces and under existing conditions, nineteen parking spaces would be required. So the site is non-conforming presently in terms of not having the required amount of parking spaces. Under proposed conditions, fourteen striped parking spaces are proposed and the zoning would require twenty-one spaces. So although the site remains non-conforming to the required number of parking spaces, it's becoming more conforming because there are more parking spaces that are being added more than is needed simply for the addition. And so in that respect, the addition itself, the seven hundred and twenty-five square foot addition, only requires two spaces. And here, we're proposing an additional seven spaces, so we're covering the number of spaces that are needed for the addition plus adding additional spaces to decrease the existing parking non-conformity. And finally, for the special screening requirements, the um zoning ordinance refers back to a provision in another section of the zoning bylaw um that requires a thirty-foot side and rear yard vegetated buffer, a fifty-foot front yard vegetated buffer. Um all of these are existing non-conforming conditions on the site. So as you consider the standard for the special permit, um not substantially more detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood, I think it's important to look at the surrounding neighborhood. And probably all of you are familiar with Thornton Drive, but this is beginning of Thornton Drive here, sort of driving up. You cannot see in this um graphic the subject property. Again, heading further north, this is Thornton Drive. And then again, um heading further north and with the Shepley being sort of at the top off the screen, here is the subject property. So as you can see, um I would suggest this is uh consistent with the neighborhood uh that exists in this area. Um in addition, I think a a significant benefit of this project, and if you have questions, Mark Dibb can certainly speak to it, is the installation of a new drainage system that doesn't currently exist to handle stormwater. Um that's a substantial improvement. And I'd also note that the uh proposed plan does maintain a ten-foot vegetated buffer to the south um of the proposed pavement area uh to help buffer it from existing uh neighboring buildings. Um I did want to make a some suggested findings um because things have changed a little bit in terms of the addition uh and the size of the addition from when we filed the plans originally. And so just to quickly walk through those and then I'm gonna stop and and try and answer any questions that the board may have. Um the findings that that I would suggest are um first one would be referencing of the uh existing variance, um which granted the relief that I described uh previously. Um also uh referencing that the property is pre-existing non-conforming to lot coverage parking and the special screening requirements, and so that these existing non-conforming conditions can be intensified by special permit. Um referencing that the proposed seven hundred and twenty-five square foot uh storage expansion does not create any new non-conformities. Um that the use here, which is a retail tool store and associated storage, requires less parking than the generic retail category set forth in the zoning ordinance. Um I I was not part of the site plan review process for um this project. I came in afterward, but I did watch the hearing at site plan review and I noted that the building commissioner, in his comments, um also noted this this point, that the zoning ordinance category for uh parking uses the sort of generic category retail, which even though this would also be subject to it in terms of the retail component, um you know, a retail uh convenience store is gonna require a lot more parking than a retail tool store. And so although it still falls under that generic category, the characteristics of this proposed use of retail tool store with associated storage um is gonna require less parking than uh a convenience store would. Um and in fact, the building commissioner anecdotally noted, I saw in the hearing, that he's gone to this store to buy his tools and has never seen an issue with uh the parking spaces. Um and I think that is a circumstance which uh warrants the reduction of spaces should the board so find under tech section two forty fifty-seven. Um I think it's also um would be good for the board to note that the applicant does propose to stripe an additional seven spaces for a total of fourteen, although the addition itself only requires two additional spaces. And then finally, um the generic finding that it is not substantially more detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood. So um I think I'm gonna pause there. Um if the board finds the special permit, then there is not a need for the variance, and so I would ask for that to be withdrawn without prejudice. And then if it's appropriate at the right time, I think the last staff report that I saw still references the two thousand square foot addition. Um so I do have a couple of little changes to the conditions. I think it's condition one and two in the staff report when you get to that stage, but I think I'll pause there um and uh ask the board if it has any questions. But I think I'll pause there and ask the board if it has any questions for me, and I can stop sharing my screen too. Actually, maybe before I do that, Chris or Harry, do you have anything you wanted to add? No? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Does the board have any questions for the applicant?
Just a very quick one before we get to public comment. Is the, is the initial intent for this just strictly, you're running out of storage? I mean, it's not a tremendously large space. Is that, is that really the extent of this?
Chris, do you want to respond?
You have to unmute, please, Chris.
Can you hear me now?
We can.
Please identify yourself and your address.
Yes, so the intent is strictly for storage.
Chris, please identify yourself and your address.
Oh, hi, I'm Chris Sossio, Northeast Tool Supply. And to answer the question, yes, it is strictly for storage. The addition is strictly for storage.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Any more questions by the board?
No.
Uh, I would ask now for public comment? I don't know if we have any. Is, David, is there anybody else out there?
Uh, don't leave, so, um, do we get anything Anna for public comment?
No, we didn't.
Okay.
Then seeing.
I see a few people here to talk on the item, but I don't see any other people. If there is any public comment, now is the time to speak.
Seeing or hearing none, then I propose that public comment be closed. We need a vote on that.
Second. Yep.
Uh, we need a motion. Mark?
Motion to close public comment?
Second, please.
Second.
Denise seconds. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
It's unanimous. Okay, now let's bring it back for board discussion. The hearing is closed. Does the board have any issues here or want to talk about anything?
If I might, Mr. Temporary Chairman?
Unfortunately.
Out of a, out of an abundance of caution, I just want to mention that I'm a frequent patron to this business, but I do believe that I can objectively speak in this matter. But it does allow me for anecdotal evidence of the fact that I have probably been at this business a hundred times in the last two years. I've never seen more than four cars at any given time. I'm assuming they still maintain some additional storage across the street, so there's a lot of frequent movement there. I wasn't even aware that they owned the parcel in which we are indicating that there's an expansion. I don't think really the retail part of this business that any patrons really get even to that place. If there's any buffer on Thornton Drive at all, it's obviously by mistake. So really, nothing happens there. I really don't see any detriment to this. And I think this is just a matter of helping them provide, you know, an additional service to their business or just an availability. They're very busy, we know that, and I don't see any issue here for myself. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Anybody else on the board have any discussion items?
No, I agree. If it's a thousand square foot selling space, it's hardly, as you say, comparing it to a convenience store. I think it's hardly likely to have excessive parking needs versus what they're proposing.
Thank you, Denise. All right, then I need a board member to make findings. Mark, thanks for volunteering.
Thank you.
Apologize, I'm just gonna pull it up here.
Now, let's make sure we're voting on a special permit, not the variants.
And is that the, is that the oh, oh four, oh?
Oh three nine.
Oh three nine is the special permit? All right, sorry.
Mr. Chairman, would it help if I put up the suggested findings that I had on my screen a few minutes ago?
That would certainly help me. I know Mark has his memorized, but.
I'm being disabled.
One second.
Sorry.
All right, all set.
Great. One second.
Okay.
Let me just get to the green.
Uh, magic.
Sorry, is that me that's making it? Oh, there we go.
Okay, Mark, you got it.
I, I do, sorry. Hers just bumped mine out. Sorry.
Oh, sorry.
On my own screen. It's okay. I'll just, I'll go through this and. Uh, this is with regard to special permit number two zero two-two dash zero three nine, one five seven Thornton Drive LLC. Section two forty dash fifty-seven, reduction in parking. Section two forty dash ninety-three B, alterations and expansions of a non-conforming structure not used as single or two-family residents. One fifty-seven Thornton Drive LLC is applied for a special permit pursuant to section two forty dash ninety-three B expansion of a pre-existing non-conforming structure into section two forty fifty-seven, reduction in parking. The applicant seeks to construct an approximately seven hundred and, apologize, twenty, seven hundred and twenty-five square foot addition to the southern end of the existing building. The existing structure is non-conforming to numerous dimensional parking and screening requirements, and the proposed expansion will also be non-conforming to dimensional parking and screening requirements. The subject property is located at one five seven Thornton Drive, Hyannis, Mass. For all special permits, the board is required to make general findings pursuant to two forty dash one twenty-five C. The board should review the evidence presented by the applicant's staff and members of the public. And after weighing such evidence, is encouraged to articulate if and how the evidence contributes to each of the required findings. Number one, that the application falls within the category specifically accepted in the ordinance for a grant of a special permit. Counsel has shown that through a prior variance and, and the existing conditions, that that is the fact. After an evaluation of all the evidence presented, the proposal fulfills the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance and do not represent a substantial detriment to the public good or the neighborhood affected. Counsel has shown that it is in like kind with the surrounding properties, and then that would be the case. A site plan has been reviewed and found approvable with conditions, see letter dated June twenty-first, twenty twenty-two. Further, section two forty-one twenty-five C requires the board to find that such uses do not substantially adversely affect the public health, safety, welfare, comfort, or convenience of the community. But find that counsel has shown that the addition of substantially improved drainage and, and adherence to not, not any additional non-conforming situations would make that so. The building and site designer, consistent with section two forty dash twenty-five E district-wide design and performance standards applicable within the highway business district, further section two forty dash ninety-three B requires that the board find that the proposed repairs, alterations, and/or expansion are not substantially more detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood. Again, counsel has shown that based on, through both aerial examination and by general photographic evidence that this would be the case. Those are my findings.
Thank you, Mark. Would also want to specifically note that based upon the planning board findings, that the applicant has reduced the request from two thousand and two square feet to seven hundred and twenty-five. I need a second for Mark's findings.
Second.
Denise seconds. We'll take a roll call vote on this one. Aaron?
I'm in favor.
Denise?
In favor.
Mark?
I'm in favor.
And I'm in favor. The special permit, a vote of four, is granted. And Eliza, do you want to make a motion to withdraw twenty twenty-two oh forty?
Yes, I, I, did the board want to vote on.
You want to go through?
That's good. You're right, you're right. We have some special requirements. Mark?
Attorney Cox, would you like to present number one and two as you wanted to revise? And then we can call it on that.
Great. So I was going to suggest that condition number one, do you want me just to read it or tell you where I'm proposing the?
Yeah, so Anna can, unless Anna has it already. Do you have it already, Anna?
It isn't yet. I can email it to her afterwards.
Yes, please.
So maybe just read, and then Anna will get it after.
Okay. So I was proposing that condition one would read, "A special permit number twenty twenty-two dash oh three nine is granted to one fifty-seven Thornton LLC pursuant to section two forty ninety-three B expansion of a pre-existing non-conforming structure and a section two forty fifty-seven reduction in parking to allow the construction of an approximately seven hundred and twenty-five square foot storage addition to the southern end of the six thousand eighty-seven square foot existing building, which will intensify the existing non-conforming lot coverage from thirty-one point three percent to thirty-five point four percent. The existing non-conforming special screening requirements and parking demand from the required twenty-one spaces to proposed fourteen spaces at one fifty-seven Thornton Drive, Hyannis, Mass." And then condition two, the only change that I wanted to suggest is at the very end where it says, "With a last revision date of October twentieth, twenty twenty-two, instead of May thirty-first, twenty twenty-two."
That's already in here. So is, I'm showing that date as already on this, so are we just?
Maybe I'm looking at a slightly older one.
I had revised it when I received the revised plan.
Okay, so we're just, so that, so we're just saying that the one as presented, correct? Okay, so I, I'd like to find that, that with regard to staff permit dated originally July twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two, revised eleven one, twenty twenty-two, that we have condition one as presented and condition two through five as, as written.
Okay, thank you, Mark. We need a roll call vote on this, please. Denise?
Favor.
Aaron?
I'm in favor.
Mark?
I'm in favor.
And I'm in favor. Thank you, Attorney Cox. Do you have?
Thank you very much. Yes, so I will make, ask the board to allow us to withdraw without prejudice the variance application that was filed.
Okay, thank you. Let me read that in there. Appeal number twenty twenty-two oh forty, re-advertised, one fifty-seven Thornton Drive LLC. Uh, one fifty-seven Thornton Drive LLC is positioned for a variance from section two forty dash thirty-three E rear yard setback lot coverage to section two forty thirty-three, thirty-three F, special screening, section two forty dash fifty-six parking schedule, and section two forty dash fifty-seven reduction of parking. The applicant seeks to construction approximately twenty, two thousand two square foot storage addition to the southern end of the existing building, which will intensify existing non-conforming setback, lot coverage, screening, and parking demand. The subject property is located at one fifty-seven Northern Thornton Drive, Hyannis, Mass. It's shown on accessories map two ninety-six as parcel zero one nine. It is located in the industrial IND zoning district. This is continued from September fourteenth and October twelfth. The petitioner has made a motion to withdraw this without prejudice. I need a motion for that, please.
Motion to withdraw. Mark, answer.
Mark, second, please.
Second.
Denise seconds?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Denise?
I, I.
Okay, and I'm in favor, so that's unanimous, and so that's withdrawn. Thank you, Attorney Cox.
Thank you very much, all of you. Have a great night.
Have a nice evening.
Okay. Let's move now to new business. There's none. Correspondents, there is none. Not reasonably anticipated by the chair. I see none. Upcoming hearings, December seventh, January eleventh, and January twenty-fifth. Fine. All in favor of adjournment? I need a motion to adjourn, I guess.
A motion to adjourn tonight.
Okay, Denise, second.
Second.
That's Mark. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're out of here. Thank you very much.